Hey Jared, I don't see Petruski's here. I got it on the agenda. We, yeah, he's gonna add it to. Nine o'clock, we'll call the county board meeting in order, we'll give them the flag pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Beth?
Sure. Commissioner Benoit?
Here.
Commissioner Heinon?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Present.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Approve or amend the agenda?
So, Mr. Chair, a few items for you. First would be adding consent agenda item number three, the item from County Attorney Catherine Ruder regarding signature authority on county attorney grants.
Where would you like?
Item number three.
Annuity consent.
Next, an item from our auditor treasure regarding tax forfeit, repurchase of tax forfeit land. If we could please add that as the first item, 925 auditor treasure, again, the first item, 925. Lastly, there is a discussion item on County Road 54 right away. That, I, I'm sure, I know Chris is aware of this. And there he is here. So, uh, gosh, I would just say, add that, let's put that right before commissioner meeting updates.
Move for approval, the amended agenda, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. County board meetings are broadcast live, broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that the viewers can hear you. The county board observes the Roberts Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board's chair consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for open forum segments or public hearings. However, public comment on agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn your cell phones to vibrate or off. Thank you. We've got some people that signed up for open forum. If you're here for the fouquet, um, plot, there will be a public hearing for that, so we would, if you understand that, if anybody has signed up on here, then you can, you can speak at that point in time. Rosalyn Muskowski? Okay.
Yes, I, I'm sorry, my hearing aids bothering me. I have several comments for the board, for the commissioners. One is, I would like to know why you're not displaying our new state flag. And I don't know if you want to comment on that, but I believe that we have a new state flag, and I happen to love the new state flag. And I have noticed that both the city of Foley and the county commissioners are not displaying it. And I think it's a mistake if that's a partisan issue. And I think, on behalf of all the people in Foley who would like to have good government, that we should support the state flag. Secondly, and I have spoken to Commissioner Johnson about this before, with regards to employee, employee policy. I hope that we will have a new government center here, and it will bring more employees to town. And as a citizen of Foley, I think that we should change the lunch hour policy back to where it used to be, which was an hour for lunch. I believe that that would greatly increase economic activity in Foley. And I think that if anybody is aware of administrative research, that a longer lunch hour actually increases productivity, it doesn't slow people down. Second, or thirdly, the county park. I know at one point years ago, when I was not in Foley, that there was consideration of a park in this side of the county. And I still think that we are in great need of a park in this side of the county. And I would just point to you that the Fleege, Old Fleege Farm is for sale. And I, I don't know how many acres it is, but it's next to the cemetery in the city park. And I think it's a golden opportunity that will be lost if that is not purchased as part of a park system. That would be a county addition to the city park. It would be a nice big area. It's closely configured to be near the golf course and the lions park. And we could have a beautiful green acreage surrounding the city. And I think that there's plenty of things you could do with that. There's a pond on it. I think there's a creek going through it. There's an old farmhouse, and there's an old, I believe a dairy barn, very small barn, that could be restored. And I think, you know, the land does not come up willingly close by. I know that they were looking for a historic site and something, you know, well, they never found it. But an addition, it would be a nice addition to Holdridge Park, and it would, it's available. So, that would be my comments. And then I want to thank you for going forward with the government center. I think it's much needed in town. I know there's opposition to it. But those of us in favor are kind of scared to talk, because I heard my friend came here and got harassed on the way out, speaking in favor of the government's center. So I want you to know there are supporters out there that aren't commenting on Facebook and yelling and screaming that we do support a new government center. So, thank you.
On the, on the park deal, maybe you'd want to come to a park board meeting and put your, you know?
I would be happy to do that.
Okay.
I take it the, am I just allowed to come to the meeting?
Yeah, we're, it's open to the park boards.
And it's on the website?
Yes.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
On the flag, we did address that we were gonna replace them with the new flag when needed. We were gonna keep, instead of expending those costs right now, when the flags need to be repurchased, then we do the new flags.
I think you can probably get one for free from your state representative or state senator. Usually they fly capital and then they donate them, maybe have to pay shipping or something. I don't know how much the flag is, but as I said in the city, I'd be happy to help fundraise. But I can't imagine a flag is that much money.
But when it goes to the flag, there's a lot of things that go with it.
Yeah.
Like vehicles, like, there, there's a lot of things that the flag's on.
Well, you start with just having it in the meat.
Okay.
I mean, you're in charge of the county, you don't have to the whole spread out at once. Because I, as far as I know, nobody is flying the state flag in this city. I think it's a shame. I'm an assistant Girl Scout leader, and I don't know how to explain that to the children.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalyn.
Cammie? Is it Cammie? I'm gonna murder this name. Parkinson? No? You don't, I can't read the. Erickson?
I'll wait.
Okay. Shelby Rocky?
Sheila Robach, I'll wait.
Okay, I'm just butchering them today.
Harold Graham.
Harold, Harold Graham?
I'll wait also.
Debbie Graham?
Mike Deppa.
And Mike Deppa. On the end of, we don't, we don't usually.
I'd like, good morning.
Morning.
I'd like to talk about when, when they purchased the land across the road for the government center, what it was zoned as, what it's zoned at now.
It was a residential, and before we purchased it, we requested that the city rezone it to a business district, and they did.
What was the reasoning behind that?
In order to build a government center there, it needed to be rezoned to a business district.
When was that done?
Approximately three years ago.
Interest rate on the CIP bond. What's the interest rate?
I don't know current rates.
There, what? Pardon?
I'm sorry, I don't have information on current rates, so. Okay.
If we were discussing of building it, I think the public should know what the interest rate is for the CIP. Going forward, it should be written, brought forward to the public what the interest rate is.
Well, you only, you only know the interest rate until you sell the bonds. Right. I mean, a, a bond advisor can give you estimates of what interest rates are currently in the bond market, but you won't know until actually they're sold.
So what's the difference between the CIP interest rate and the HRA interest rate? On the bond, being that you're calling it a bond and selling the bonds?
I believe our, our attorney that was in the other night said it was .25.
Can I get that in writing in the written document, being that we're moving forward with the government center?
Mr. Chair?
On the two interest rates?
What?
It will be in the minutes.
It will be in the minutes. Minutes.
All right, thank you for your time.
You bet. Thanks. Consent agenda, we have items one, two, and three. Move approval?
Second.
Been made motion and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carry. Monty Headley, county administrator.
Yes, Grady Harness joined us remotely. Hey, Grady, I made you the presenter, so if you would like to share your screen and we can see. And if we have any challenges, I do have it here locally, I can go through it for you.
Yeah, do you know, if you want to throw it up on the, if you have, and you can throw it on the screen, I'll kind of just walk through it. It might be the easiest.
You assume I can actually do it correctly, okay, let's see. Steve, are you close by?
Was.
He was.
Man, it's hot in here. That's what Steve said.
Yeah, it is.
There we go.
All right, go ahead, sir.
Great. Mr. Chair, or Mr. Chair and Commissioners, thank you for having me here today. I was hoping to make it in person. Unfortunately, I have a couple events that popped up where I will, at one of them, be in front of some of Benton County delegation legislators. So I will pass on any information along to them. I will send.
The volume, please. We need volume.
Volume.
You want his volume higher?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Alright, 'cause where I see, I'm sorry, getting blasted out here, I'm, yeah. So.
Can you hear me all right?
That didn't change.
Yeah. Is that better?
Grady, can you talk?
Yes.
They're rude.
Yep.
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Since we last met at the board level on June 3rd, that was the week before the special session was called, there was a slew of bills that needed to be passed in a special session. At that point in time, the working group level, basically it was the conference committees, but because it was in special session, it was called a working group. They were working on trying to come to compromise from both sides, in the House and the Senate, on final billing, which a majority of the bills were bumped up to the leadership level. And as I'll go through in what's, what's on your video stream now, there's a report that kind of captures the regular session, the special session, and what was in, in the contents of the bills that were passed. I guess I want to start by, you know, as our sessions in the past have been unprecedented, you know, the unfortunate news after the special session, on the events that took place, and the loss of the life of Speaker Hortman, who was a great asset to the state, will be greatly missed. And it's a very unfortunate circumstance. With that said, leadership was able to pass bills in a special session that took place. Governor called on June 9th. They came in at 10:00 a.m. and were done by 2:00 a.m. on Tuesday, completing the work and then adjourning the special session. And with that, the legislature is not set to return until February 17th, 2026. However, we do anticipate a potential special session this fall to go over some of the anticipated federal level changes and how that may impact the state budget. Looking over to page nine on the package.
We'll go to page nine, that's right. Yeah, you gotta tell me page numbers, so.
Yeah, the Benton County legislative priorities, and I can start out with the first, which was the Mayheim Road, Highway 1 capital improvements. We had many successful meetings throughout session, and I wanted to thank the commissioners that participated that the day, you know, when we had the days on the Capitol. Those are very important, and we had one-on-one time with each member of our delegation, as well as leadership at the bonding committee level and the transportation committee level, which will help push our project forward. Anytime spent at the Capitol is, is well-intended and very helpful. And seeing the face of your county board there is very impactful in getting things done. So thank you for your time being up there. Unfortunately, in the bonding side this year, leadership decided that they were gonna go through and they passed a $700 million bonding package that funded primarily the state's asset preservation, water infrastructure, and some roads and bridges that were priority at the state side level. What this will do is it will get some of these projects out of the way, in hopes, and I think, in speaking to legislators from both sides of the aisle, they'd like to pass a bonding bill next year with local projects. What the dollar amount and the bonding capacity will be is unknown until November, when the state releases its economic forecast. So we will be in touch as we find out more information there. We did have a hearing on this bill. The Senate didn't hear any bonding bills this session, as there's a slew of projects that are trying to pass from the prior year. But we had an informational hearing in the House where the bill was laid over. And that will still remain active next session. So we'll continue to meet with bonding members and members of our delegation between now and over the interim. And I'd like to come up to the county and, this fall probably, and, you know, admits planning to do a bonding tour. If that happens, I'd like to come visit with you guys and strategize next session. On the Benton County Government Center, Center refundable construction tax exemption, we did have a hearing on that bill in the Senate where the bill was laid over. The hearing took place on February 20th. And unfortunately, like many of the bills, the target just wasn't in place at the high level in order to include a lot of local projects this year. On construction tax exemptions, there were over $200 million in project requests for local governments. There was some talk throughout, leading into the special session, about a broad bill that was passed in Wisconsin that allowed counties to do these on their own with a mechanism to recapture that tax. Chair Rice in the Senate indicated an interest to continue to look at that and try and find a resolution this, during this interim and next session. So I, I'll be in touch with her office in hopes of getting maybe a tour or a meeting with her and the county board to walk through the importance of this for your project. And kind of looking at if there are any options. I know that you plan to start construction soon on it, and how the best way would be going forward to capture that if possible. So we'll continue those conversations. On the next following pages, and you can see on page 10 and 11, it outlines what is in the capital investment bill. One thing of note is there was some funding dedicated towards transportation projects in, in the transportation bill. And in my conversations with Chris, he's looking at exploring if any of those qualify for the Highway 1 project. On page, one thing of note on the tax bill on page 12, while we were unsuccessful, as all counties were, on those construction exemption taxes, my team worked hard at the Capitol advocating for counties to prevent further mandates such as modifying the PILTS, the payment to move taxes. That, from my understanding, would have impacted the county's budget by $22,000. We prevented that from happening this year. And also additional changes that were proposed for County Program A. So that was one successful note on the tax bill. Just to mention in the transportation side of the House, the county board did have extensive conversations up until the very end of session, of special session, to try and get some funding through the transportation bill. Our bill was written specifically for bonding. Most of the projects funded through transportation are trunk highway related. There were four in the transportation bill that were funded for trunk highway projects, of which Benton County does not qualify. But we will continue to have those conversations. Sometimes they are able to put bonding dollars through the transportation committee in earmark projects. Unfortunately, that was something that didn't get done this year. There was disappointment expressed by legislators on both sides of the aisle for not including those local projects. And just one more major highlight to note, on page 15, the Human Services Finance Omnibus Bill. This is where the Avivo project in St. Cloud was, the bill was introduced, and during our meetings, we supported that project with our delegation. The bill did not move forward during the regular session. And luckily though, in the leadership agreement, it was able to come out of nowhere and was included in the final leadership agreement. So from my understanding, that is one small piece to the project moving forward. But I wanted to share that with the board. Also included a couple of the other omnibus bills that may be of interest. So if you have a moment to take advance through there.
We'll, we'll email copies of this to you.
Excellent. And, and with that, I think, just wanted to note that I will be attending, there's a DC Transportation Alliance meeting, September 16th through 18th. And I will be attending that, and hopefully we can work with the board to T F some meetings on the side when we're in DC. And I will be in touch as I hear if bonding tours will be happening this summer. And keep you all posted. With that, I just wanted to stand for any questions and.
Any questions from anybody?
Mr. Chair, no, I just want to thank Grady for everything he's did, did for us, for the county, at the county level. Truly appreciate it, though we came up short. Hopefully we can get something in the future.
Sold it pretty much everybody.
Right, yeah.
Thank you, yes. And we will continue pushing, you know, full force ahead. I think one comment that I was told about making a presence at the Capitol is, if you're not at the table during all of these sessions, and sometimes it, it takes time to, to get things based on the political environment, but if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And I think that Benton County has made significant progress this last year in being at the table and making your project known to those that make decisions. And it's an honor to work with you.
Thank you, Grady.
Thanks, Grady.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll email a copy of that to you.
All right.
Yep. I believe, Mr. Chair, next up is Amanda. Go right ahead, yep.
Good morning, county commissioners.
Morning.
Chair Pop. I'll get right to your PowerPoint presentation, and in your packet you should have our staff report, the memo that was sent out on Friday, and then the draft resolution, and then also the PowerPoint, the copy of the PowerPoint. But for the public, I'm just gonna go through the PowerPoint for you. All right, so for several years, the quad counties of Benton, Sherburne, Stearns, and Wright Counties have been working towards the creation of a 7W Economic Development District. The Economic Development Administration provides preferential consideration and awarding funding to areas within a designated Economic Development District. Currently, our region 7W is not a designated Economic Development District. And that's with the materials that I'm presenting to you today. That's what we're looking for establishing at this point. And we've been talking about it for several years, I'm sure. You know, this is, you know, nothing new to you. But as far as establishing that Economic Development District, it's really for the purposes of workforce, economic development, and/or national, natural or economic development disasters. We are partnering with the Initiative Foundation as the regional economic development and community foundation dedicated to serving all four of our counties. They offered to serve as the coordinator and the fiscal agent and the host for the establishment of our regional seven, region 7W Economic Development District application. They intend to submit that to the U.S. Economic Development Administration, so federal EDA, to create and host the region 7W Economic. to create and host the Region 7W Economic Development District. If that application is approved, the county would commit to participating in the district by appointing an elected representatives to serve on their governing board and to contribute county staff time to further work, further the work of the economic development district and that county staff time would be counted as my staff time working towards the.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yes, of course. So I'm just going to go run through the PowerPoint presentation mainly for the public so they understand what a Region 7W federal designation looks like. The designation is really, there's several different districts within the state of Minnesota. You can see in the top right, or top left corner, our region and a couple of other regions are not currently served by an RDO. There are nine regional development commissions in Minnesota and they're established to provide technical assistance to LGUs, local government agencies or units in their regions such as obtaining and administering grants for programs and projects. So really, the reason behind establishing this regional economic development districts is so that we can apply for federal EDA grants, if that makes sense. Central Minnesota is not served. We, there are multi-jurisdictional planning and economic development agencies federally designated by EDA. A regional RDO is really one that has applied for federal designation. DED has further defined Central Minnesota Region 7W as our region. The designation of federal economic development districts, this really just kind of talks about how our, how an organization is created. So upon the request of a district organization, an EDA may designate a region as an economic development district if that region contains at least one geographic area that is subject to the economic distress criteria and is identified and an approved SEDS. We do have an approved SEDS agreement that we have been keeping updated over the past few years. Staff from all of the counties have been working to keep that updated so that we have the tools in place if we were to move forward with adopting this region economic development district. So the other thing is, is in order to create a regional EDA district, it is, it has to be of sufficient size and population, contains sufficient resources to foster economic development on a scale more than, involving more than a single geographic area subject to the economic distress criteria and has an EDA approved SEDS, which we do. And that meets the statutes underneath that chapter. It contains specific program for intra-district cooperation, self-help, public investment and is approved by each affected state and by its assistant secretary. The other criteria is to obtain commitments from at least a majority of the counties or other areas within the proposed district as determined by EDA to support economic development district, to support the activities in the district. So a majority of the counties have to participate in order for us to establish this district, which we do.
Mr. Chair, Amanda, has anybody passed this yet?
So Sherburne County has moved forward with their discussions on it. We're presenting this information to you as, so that we can gain support for this application. So Sherburne County has presented it. Stearns County has presented it. I believe they tabled that discussion. I think there's some other factors going into the reason why they've tabled it. Wright County is not participating and I'm presenting it to you today, so.
Mr. Chair, Amanda, while we're on that subject, so you said a majority of the counties. So in this case, if Wright's already said they're out.
Wright has said they're out.
Of the four?
Yeah.
And is Wright still included even though they haven't passed a resolution?
So we've left it open for Wright County to participate. I think there's just, there's the board makeup and the idea of establishing this district and the financial contribution they weren't comfortable with. So they, they have backed out as far as right now, but they do have the opportunity to join this organization if they do choose to later on.
If they're not in, will they receive the same type of services? If they're included in the four county members?
Technically, yes. They could.
Yeah, okay.
Same with Stearns. Well, what happens if Stearns is out and it's a two to two?
Then we won't be able to, because it's not the majority.
I don't think the Stearns part is in or out. I think it's, there's other factors that came into why Stearns can't do this right now. That's why they tabled it. So I don't think, you know.
Yeah.
So we do need a majority of the counties to support this and really, if you understand the whole reasoning behind creating this economic development district is really to apply for federal grants. In your memo that you have in your packet, there are examples of grants that our region has already secured and that would be, St. Cloud has secured actually two different grants. One for, in 2020 for the St. Cloud Technical and Community College, 2.5, just over 2.5 million. In 2018, 112,000, just over 112,000 for the city of St. Cloud, hiring an economic recovery coordinator to complete an analysis of economic needs for the city after the closure of the Electrolux facility. So they've received two grants already. And then there's other examples in here of grants that the state has received as far as having these districts established.
How did they receive those without this being?
So at that time, we were a designated district because Central Minnesota Jobs and Training, they were the facilitator. I think there's some, a little bit of history behind that. I think it's actually in the slide and I can kind of go through what that history looks like. So the economic development districts are critical to EDA. They're vital to a regional economic development capacity building, so institutional partnerships, grant-making, implementation, information sharing. The EDE, the economic development district helps local community organizations apply for administer EDA grant funding, planning to, for building public sector capacities, higher levels of federal EDA investment in designated areas. So 73% of the projects funded from federal EDA are in designated areas while only 52% of the population live in areas with EDD. So the growth and expansion of EDDs, EDDs are eligible to receive actually an $80,000 grant, there's a mistake there, not 70,000, but $80,000 in federal EDA funding to support the development, implementation and revision or replacement of their SEDS plan. And that's what we're looking at applying for, for this next year through federal EDA for the staff time. Examples of impacts made by RDOs, this is where that slideshow tells you about all of the other RDOs and different regions that applied for funding and received funding, just examples of grant applications. And you can see, St. Cloud is listed in there and that was for the Electrolux and of course, the 2.5 million for the advanced manufacturing training lab at St. Cloud Technical and Community Services typically provided by an RDO is transportation, community development, visioning, grant writing, facilitation, hazard mitigation, trail and transit, revolving loan fund administration, local worker training. So those are typically funded and provided by Minnesota RDOs. So this is the history, if you want to kind of dive into history with me a little bit. The quad counties had an informal group that met occasionally to discuss the regional projects, but there was no formal federal designation in place. Initial meeting with federal EDA staff was held on, in May of 2016. That's where I met maybe one or two of you at that meeting. And that was held at the Central Minnesota Jobs and Training.
In Monticello.
Oh, it was in Monticello.
It was in Monticello, yeah.
Monticello, that one was, yes. And so at that point in time, Central Minnesota Jobs and Training was our partner. They developed the SEDS document. The application process took place because you have to fill out the SEDS, you know, you have to do the SEDS document and then submit it to federal EDA to establish our district. Our joint powers agreement was created between the four counties and Central Minnesota Jobs and Training Services was added, added an FTE, Full Time Equivalent Employee to facilitate the process. An updated regional certified economic development strategy was developed and then we submitted that EDA application in 2018. So the process took a couple of years for us to submit that SEDS document to federal EDA. EDA initiated that 68-week process time and requested additional information. The evaluation continued in the spring of 2019. And then in 2019, federal EDA staff visited Central Minnesota Jobs and Training for a closed-door meeting with the elected officials from the four counties. And at that time, they advised the group that we would not be granted the federal designation for Central Minnesota Economic Development. And shortly thereafter, dissolution, resolution of the joint powers between Benton, Sherburne, Stearns and Wright County was executed. And the reason that Central Minnesota Jobs and Training was not granted that economic development district is because they actually, their network expanded further than just our counties, our four counties. So federal EDA didn't accept that because their, their network was too broad. So and that's why, you know, the Initiative Foundation is looking to host our Region 7W Economic Development District. So our next steps really is to continue discussions with federal EDA. The Initiative Foundation is completing a feasibility study that would examine potential local interests moving forward, potential partners to host EDD, the structure and then the matching grant opportunities, which is that $80,000. So working with IADC's Economic Recovery Corporation Fellow Program to assist with that feasibility study, the Initiative Foundation is handling all of that internally, right? So really, the request that I'm looking for is the initial support through that resolution that's included in your packet, adopting that resolution, supporting the Initiative Foundation's application to the US EDA to create and host the Region 7W Economic Development District. That's that resolution of support. This is not committing any funds to the establishment of the district. You know, at that time, you know, if the application gets approved, because we'll have to submit our SEDS document, we'll have to, the Initiative Foundation will have to submit their application to federal EDA. If that gets approved by federal EDA for the Initiative Foundation to host, we'd come back and do some sort of joint powers agreement and discuss potential funding, matching funding sources and discuss our bylaws actually as part of that too. So really, it's not, we're not asking for any funding commitment today. We're asking for support to submit the application to federal EDA. As I mentioned before, our bylaws that we initially created and the conversation between all the counties talked about using staff time as in-kind contribution towards the contribution by each individual county, right? So that's how I was mentioning before or earlier, that my staff time, Pamela's staff time would be essentially counted as a contribution for the funding source.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
Two questions, Amanda. If it were to go through, you talked about elected officials representing that board. Is it based off county population? Is there one from each county, two from each county?
We haven't established those bylaws and what that looks like yet, but I'm assuming that we'll have at least one from each county. I'm not sure if there's going to be more. I'm assuming that there's also going to be some representation by county economic development on that board as well.
Okay. Second question, aware of any federal cuts to the federal EDA?
At this point, I am not. I'm certainly not, but.
Amanda, when you talk about the hosts, you're not talking about Benton County being the host?
Absolutely not. Initiative Foundation is.
Initiative Foundation is the host.
Be that host. So the Initiative Foundation is essentially carrying everything to this point. We have to submit the application to, in order for us to move forward, Initiative Foundation has to submit that application to federal EDA.
So way back when we're going and I went to several of these in Monticello. So were they an EDA at that time that had?
It was, it was established at that time. Yeah, but they had to dissolve that entity because Central Minnesota Jobs and Training, I think their span, they reached so many counties and it just wasn't a federal EDA distinct.
So we're just trying to get back to where we were?
We're trying to get back to where we were. It's been quite the struggle the last couple of years, but we've been keeping up our SEDS document and we just submitted that update, I want to say, last year before the end of December. So we have, I think it has to be updated every five years. So really, it's just, it's an opportunity for us to participate, to apply for federal funding, be eligible to receive those federal dollars and, you know, there's several different projects across the county that we could tap at that.
Is the Initiative Foundation part of the cost sharing?
I believe they, they applied for the grant funding through federal EDA. I know that at one point, they discussed it, you know, but they are going to have staff, they're going to have to have staff to support it.
So that 80,000, 80,000 matching grant, if, if, just to be clear, if Wright County's out, that 80,000 will be split between the three counties?
Based on population.
Based on population.
That's how we have talked about it in the past.
Stearns will have 50-plus percent.
Yeah.
That explains why.
Yeah.
And again, remember, we're looking for in-kind contribution through staff time to help alleviate any cost burden that the county would have. So there's that.
Is there a timeline on this, on submitting this?
We would like to get it submitted before the end of the year.
Okay.
And really, I mean, we're just, we're looking for the county board's support through that resolution of support, so.
I mean, just because we support it doesn't mean there's a financial contribution.
We would have to come back to the county to talk through what that financial contribution looks like and how that's structured, but that will come back later. And that's depending on if our application is approved at federal EDA.
How long before Stearns looks back at it?
I don't know with their board, how, what their dynamic is going to look like in the next few weeks, so I couldn't really tell you.
I don't know if they tabled it or postponed it.
They tabled it.
They tabled it. They tabled it indefinitely?
No.
Okay.
I think they needed another commissioner on that board in order to push it forward, so.
Well, that person won't be there till January.
Yeah.
No, is it November, the election?
Yeah, election, they don't take office till.
They don't take office?
Oh, actually.
They would, yeah.
They can take office right away.
Yeah.
So November.
Hopefully, yeah.
Would there be any problem with us tabling it for a week to think about this too, now that we got the presentation?
If you want to table it and think about it, you sure can. We just.
To me, it makes sense, but.
You saying readdress it on August 5th meeting?
Yeah.
You have the information. If you have additional questions, feel free to reach out to me, of course.
I don't see a reason why I wouldn't pass it, but.
Right, you know, going back to when we were there, it's so far back, you can't remember a lot of things, but it seemed like it was, to my recognition, it seemed like Wright County and Sherburne County were the ones at that point in time that were benefiting the most way back then.
I think there was projects that they had envisioned at that time.
At that time, so.
Mm-hmm. And I don't know that Benton County had anything pressing.
I can't.
But again, this is a regional economic development initiative, right? So projects in and across Benton County, right, you know, Sherburne, Stearns, we'd all benefit.
We didn't have an economic development group and you were working for another entity at that time.
Correct, yes.
I'd like. I'd like to talk to the other boards and find out why, why, why Wright didn't support it. I mean.
I, I had that conversation this morning with Amanda because.
Yeah. Let's see, I have, I was told it's a little complicated over there. And they felt it was another layer of government and that there was not a board majority to move it forward. That's all I really got from Wright County.
Okay. And we, as individuals, can talk to Wright County Commissioner.
Yeah.
And maybe if, you know, if you could talk to Wright County and get them on board, that'd be great.
Yeah.
So, maybe tabling it would be a really great idea, just for a week or whatever.
We're in tune with Wright County right now than we have been because they've joined MICA, you know, the person on the library from Wright County seems to be, the commissioner seems more forward-thinking, so there's always a possibility.
I'll be seeing Tina next week, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. And really, it's just, you know, establishing this regional development district, it, it seems like it would be another layer, but it really, I mean, it's a, it's a process that we have to move forward with if, if we want to apply for any federal funding. It's a, it's a process.
One more question.
Yeah.
Are we the only area that doesn't have one of these right now?
There is another, I think it's in southeast.
Yeah, but I see everything colored in, pretty much.
This.
Yeah.
Okay.
East.
All right.
So, there's nine, so 7W, 11, and 10.
I'm going to move to table this to our August, our first meeting in August.
Second.
Is there, can I ask if there's a general consensus as far as thinking about it, or, I mean.
I, yeah.
Just want more clarification on other boards?
Yep.
Yep.
My consensus, too.
Yep.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Call a question, Mr. Chair?
No, we don't have to on a table.
Do we?
I'll let you decide that.
No, I think when we table, we don't have to call a question.
I think it's a major motion. I think you do, but that's your choice, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I think we'll just table it.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, I went through lots of gyrations.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, at the recent legislative session, the legislature made substantial changes to the remote meeting aspects of the open meeting law. So, you may remember in the past, there was kind of two ways you could participate remotely. From a public location that had to be published three days prior, or if you were under the care of a medical professional, you could do that three times a year. Well, basically, those two provisions essentially just went away. So, instead of having kind of two buckets, there's just one. And the, one of the most substantial changes is when you participate remotely, it does not need to be from a publicly accessible location. Also, too, that three-time limitation that was associated with being under medical care, that went away. So, really now, there's just really one bucket. So, you can participate remotely from a non-public location. I wanted, if I may, so I've made some suggested revisions to your board policy to reflect the new, the new law. If I may, I have on the screen the relevant sections, and if I may, I'd like to skip C and then just first go over items D, E, F, and G, because these are statutory. So, for example, you still need to be able to see and hear each other. That's, that's, that is retained in the policy. So, we got to see you, we got to hear you. At least one board member must be physically present at your regular meeting location, at least one. All votes must be by roll call. And then lastly, the names of board members who may participate remotely must be published in the meeting agenda not less than three days prior. Now, you may be thinking, well, you know, what if suddenly I'm, I'm, I'm kind of not feeling well, but I want to be remotely, and it's like the morning of the meeting? What do you do? Well, I picked this up at a recent, I believe it was a MICA call or it was AMC call, and it's acceptable, basically, to print the names of all board members in your agenda and just leave it there. So, every agenda would say, these five board members may participate remotely, and then you're good. You're good. So, so that's kind of the basic statutory stuff. I wanted to go up to item C. Now, I carried forward the policy choice that you all had made months ago when we first adopted this, that limited your participation to not more than four times per year for a regular board meeting and four times a year for a committee. I wanted to ask you, you know, if you want to revisit that, that numerical limitation, you, you want to, you want to leave it, you want to change it, you want to just totally toss it out? I, I wanted to get your thoughts. I, for now, for starters, I just carried it over from the old policy. So, I paused there, Mr. Chair, for your discussion.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think it's hard to go against us, I mean, because we're, we can agree up here, but the minute you get a new board member, they could go right off the state statute, correct?
The Board Policy Manual is not, is not legally binding upon board members.
Mm-hmm.
It's sort of an agreement amongst you all to abide by it. That's right, yeah.
Sort of.
Well, I could, I could say this, Mr. Chair. You know, if you wanted to force the issue, let's just say, for example, you know, one board member says, I'm going to be remote. Well, I think you, as board members, have the authority to say no. In other words, you would, you would say, no, we're, in other words, you might have a motion and you would vote, and you'd say, no, we're not going to allow you to be remote. I think you have that authority as a board collectively as a whole to determine whether or not someone can be remote or not. I think that's within your authority.
This is another thing I think we need to think about, because we can agree right here, but you get a different board member on it, it could be a battle.
Yeah. You know, I, my personal feeling is that you can be remote, but if you're remote, time after time after time, I don't think that's good for the.
Nope, I agree.
For the board. And I think I would, I would like to see the county have some rules on that part. I mean, if you've got health issues, different story.
Mm-hmm.
But if, if, you know, if, if you just have a, like a grievance against the board or something that you don't want to come to the board meeting, right? I mean, I don't think that's right.
So, that, so, Mr. Chair, what you're saying is that you should probably just leave it as, as it is right now?
Before?
With just four, early line items C.
Unless you want to add any additional absences that are approved by the board. Okay. I mean, it's like back to your medical thing, if you've, maybe you have to be gone six meetings, I don't know.
Yeah.
I mean.
You could.
That could happen.
You could put a revision in there under medical.
Ask the board then to say, I need to extend this because of this.
Right.
Just a thought. Any additional absences would need to be approved by the.
And we can revisit this again next year, too. I mean, I don't think, I don't think anybody's been really.
Well, it hasn't been abused.
No.
Been abused at all.
I think we just leave it as is for now and address it next year.
Yeah.
And see how it goes this year.
Was there consensus for Commissioner Johnson suggesting for an additional sentence to say additional absences may be approved at the discretion of the county board? Something like that?
It should be related, I think, Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I think that's the intent.
So, we're good with that?
Mm-hmm.
That addition? Okay.
Medical, in some word to say, medical.
Yeah.
I mean, it's for medical reasons.
So, you think, you think the additional times in excess of the four should be based upon a medical reason?
And still approved by the board.
Okay, understood. Yeah. So, I, I can make that revision.
Everybody okay with that?
I think that's the most likely thing to happen.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
So, you're saying the first four are good?
Are good, no matter what it is for.
But after that.
They need extended time.
Yeah. So, making no assumptions, Mr. Chair, I want to make sure that, you know, again, the, the plan here is that we would publish your names every agenda.
Yep.
And would say, the following board members may participate remotely.
Yep.
Are you all comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, want to make sure.
Okay.
Okay. And that covers that statute, that statutory section G in this, says you have to publish the names. I think when people wrote this law, they didn't, they didn't think about, well, what about a medical issue the day before or the morning of? I don't think they thought about that, so.
I could have done that this morning.
Okay. Is there then a motion to approve as amended by Commissioner Johnson's?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Well, it's been made in second to approve as amended by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roxanne?
Do we have any AC in this building?
God.
It's hot up here.
It was hot in here yesterday.
You're going to make me pass out.
Ask Monty if he's got a fan.
I might have to relieve myself.
I suppose you're not feeling well, are you? You know?
All right, good morning, Commissioner. Mr. Chair. Before you, we have a plat of Folket Farms, plat one. Corey and Catherine Folket do own this property. It's approximately, it's, it's just over 30 acres, and they're proposing three lots. One of the three lots does have an existing dwelling on it, and then it would be two additional lots for development. All of the lots meet our minimum lot size of two acres, the smallest being 3.9 acres. They have access from County Road 6 or Ronaby Road. It will just be one additional access. It'll be a shared driveway entrance for both lots two and three. There will not be access from the township road. This did go to the township last night and was approved by Maywood Township. We did review this at a public hearing last Thursday at the Planning Commission. There were some concerns from surrounding residents about the development of this ag land. This does meet all of our requirements for minimum lot size, for density, for per 40 is what's permitted. Because this property is under 40 acres, three is the maximum density, maximum number of houses that can be placed on this property. In the corner is a cemetery, so that's not a dwelling in that far southwest corner. That's not a dwelling. This is just north of Ronaby, an area that is zoned for rural services, so it's, it's more of your, more compact development, which is residential and commercial type uses. This is consistent with our comprehensive plan, making sure that we're containing development near roadways and intersections, and then closer to our rural service districts. It did get approved by the Planning Commission.
Mr. Chair, Roxanne, just as a point of interest, that all the property to the west of the proposed lots are, is deed restricted?
Not the entire parcel. It's just deed restricted to the amount to make 30 acres, so there's roughly six acres that's not deed restricted. However, that's not enough for a development right.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, then the next item on our agenda is to consider a public hearing. Before we open the public hearing, we've heard from staff. Is there anything else you wish to add?
I have not received any comments from the public. We did receive approval from the township, and the county highway department did grant access approval.
Okay. If the applicant is present or their representative is here, would they please come to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us why you're seeking this?
Excuse me, good morning, board. My name's Corey Folket. My address is 13792 Ronaby Road, Foley, Minnesota. Excuse me, dang it. The reason that we're seeking to split this off, so, me and my family farm in Benton County. We have about a little over 500 acres that we farm. We recently purchased this, this parcel, and we don't, we don't need the house, so we're splitting that off. During the time of the split, we decided to make two other parcels across the front. You know, maybe someday down the road, I have four kids, maybe they would build out there. Intentions are just to keep farming the whole thing. And these front corners, this is kind of the worst part of the field, so that's kind of why we went with this, because there's some wetland up in the corner, and, and it's full of rocks, so. Benton County is good at growing winter potatoes. They show up every spring, so. So, anyways, that's why we did the way that we did it, so. Whoops, sorry. So, that's the, that's the intention.
Okay. We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to address the county board on this item? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address, so. Anybody in the audience that wishes to come before the county board and state your name and address?
Harold Graham, 1384178 Street, Northeast, Foley, Minnesota.
Okay.
Want to point to the, maybe it'll show here. Does it show on the screen? Let's go over here. This, these piece, this piece right here that Mr. Johnson was talking about to the west, would that potentially be allowed to have houses on it?
Mr. Johnson talked about deed restricted. So, what's stopping two years from now, five years from now, having that turned into additional housing?
Roxanne, can you address that?
Yeah. At this time, the maximum density is reached in that area, so he cannot build an additional dwelling out there unless density is transferred from another area, which would be a conditional use and public hearing process to transfer additional density.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience that wishes to?
My name is Carrie Erickson. I live at 7975 Ronaby Road Northeast with my husband, Mark. We've lived on the property for 22 years, and we are here to oppose this, and we did present at the meeting on the 10th, and many, actually, one of our other neighbors was also present and opposed this as well. And we've made some of our, of our other neighbors aware of this as well, which is why they are also here. We, like I said, presented on the 10th, and we're saddened by the outcome and the lack of concern that was shown by the zoning and planning committee at that time. We're tax-paying and voting citizens of Benton County. We feel that our feelings and concerns are being disregarded for the financial benefit of the county and one individual family. We've questioned the intent of Mr. Folket as we've been made aware of his purchase of additional properties on our road in the past several months. We found false information by Mr. Folket that was provided on the application. We were told last week that these issues do not matter. We raised concerns about the possibility of flooding at our home due to the changing topography of the land. We have concerns about harm to wildlife, wear and tear on Ronaby Road, safety and additional resources needed for fire, police, and EMS services in the area. The city of Ronaby dissolved in 2009, and with that, the speed limit was removed from the front of our home. It's now a 55 mile an hour speed limit. We have concerns about safety in this area. This is an area that families walk with their children, with their pets, and we've been near missed, almost hit, trying to turn into our driveway by cars passing us at nearly 80 miles an hour, a quarter of a mile north of Ronaby Road. The generalized speed of the vehicles on that section of road is ridiculous. We have asked Benton County to provide additional patrol out there, and they have not. This is a road, like I said, where families walk with children, with pets, and we're now scared to do so because of the lack of safety due to traffic. Added, adding additional housing to this area is saddening. On top of that, like you said, everything is prone to change, right? And so, if he were to decide to build another house in the back, then we have four houses instead of three houses that could potentially be built in the area. Benton County had to come out and emergently dig out the ditches at our house because of flooding. When they rezoned and replained the ditches in the area, when they redid Ronaby Road Northeast, they flooded our house. And changing the topography of the land just to the north of our property causes great concern that our house is going to flood again, and Benton County's going to come out with a backhoe. I don't care what time of the night it is, they're going to do it again because they did it last time for us, because they admitted that they were wrong in how they zoned and how they planed the ditches and the road. They knew that. They put in the wrong size culverts and everything. They admitted that when they did it. As neighbors of this proposed property and with our other neighbors that are also here, we're concerned with all the taxes. We ask that you consider all of the residents that live in the area, all of us. Many of us have lived there for years, not just one resident who bought a farm and several other farms and seems to be working in cahoots with the zoning and planning commission at this point in time. They're helping to line the pockets of one family and the county employees. Remember that those who are there are tax-paying, voting citizens as well, and we strongly oppose And we strongly oppose the development of this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience that wishes to address?
Hello, my name is Sheila Robach. I live kitty corner from the property at eighty two seventy two Ronaby Road. I just want to restate my strong opposition to the subdivision. At the last meeting, every neighbor who was able to speak opposed this plan. And while only two of us could speak at the time, many others also disagree. Several couldn't speak publicly due to personal or professional ties to the Folkets. It was disheartening to see unanimous board support for converting farmland, land that directly impacts our lives, simply for one individual's financial gain. Please don't dismiss the voices of those who actually live here. This decision affects our community long term and once farmland is gone, it does not come back. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to come to the podium to speak? Last call for anyone that wants just to come to the podium and speak. We had the final call, so for anyone wishing to speak. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Were there any emails, letters, or communications to be read?
No, just that the township had acted on this and approved the plat.
Has we received anything from state agencies or cities?
Not necessary.
Okay. Then the township was affected and was acting on. The county board will now have time to discuss. Time for questions of the staff and discussion. As a reminder to the audience, the public hearing is closed. Are there any comments from board members on this action?
I think it's met all the criteria from what I can see.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, from our standpoint up here, when it goes through the township, then it goes through the planning, I mean, our hands are kind of tied, to be quite honest. We gotta, we have to have a valid reason other than what, you know, people opposing it to deny this.
Correct.
Or we could be held once again personally.
Yes, as long as the township approved it and it meets zoning requirements and all of that with the planning commission too.
Can you re, can you go through that, adding that third or the fourth house? How they would have to do that? Because right now, it is at the most that it can do.
Right. So we allow for a maximum of eight dwelling units on a forty acre parcel with a density transfer. So someone, density can only be transferred from adjacent properties. So they would have to own property adjacent and then go through proving that there are four building rights. Or if they wanted to only transfer one, they'd show that they have one building development right. And then they would go through the process of a conditional use permit through the planning commission to transfer that density to this property.
Mr. Chair, but then with that property that is transferred from gets deed restricted?
Correct.
Yeah.
And then those development rights are no longer on that property. So we're not, we're not actually increasing density in the county just on, it's just being dispersed differently.
So you said that property would have to be adjoining property in order to do a density transfer?
Correct.
Okay. So if it's across the road and they want to move one over to the other side, the one across the road that they moved it from can't, is now restricted if that was a forty.
Yeah.
That'd be, it'd be one less.
Right. Okay. Your wishes?
Anything from the planning side?
Well, I mean, to the neighbor's point, planning commission did approve it unanimously. I think that's the same issue we deal with a lot in the planning commission is the applicants. If they meet the criteria of the existing ordinance, we're in a position to have to permit. Otherwise, we're going to put ourselves in a position that the applicant sues the county.
Correct.
So this is something the planning commission faces all the time. And I think that's why we have certain criteria that has to be met. And as we all know, when the criteria isn't, that's the word I want, current, there's possibilities or options to change the ordinances. So, but we obviously have to face whatever ordinance is in front of us that evening. So that's what the planning commission did.
And this went to the township before you?
Township just saw it last night, to my understanding.
Correct.
Maywood Township had not seen it yet before the planning commission because their meeting was last night. We met last Thursday.
Okay.
And they, they passed it last night?
Yes.
Okay.
I would also say, does it need township approval?
The plat is signed by the township, so yes.
Okay.
Michelle, anything you want to throw in?
What'd she say? I didn't get her.
Roxanne covered it.
Okay.
I guess, I guess just from a legal standpoint, we're kind of bound by if it meets the criteria.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. Looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the final plat of Folket Farms, plat one, and authorize the chair to sign the plat.
Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Motion been made in second and to approve the plat and authorize the chair to sign it. Any further discussion? Hearing now not called a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Christine. Tax forfeited property?
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
So we added in a, the application for a repurchase of a tax forfeited parcel owned by Anthony Soltzer of Empire Mobility Solutions. According to statute, the property can be repurchased anytime during the six months after the forfeiting, which was on June fifth, I believe. And Mr. Soltzer is here if you wish to speak.
The applicant or that person is here?
Yes.
Do you wish to speak? Okay.
He's got a letter in here. I think it's very straightforward, Mr. Chair. Well, I think it's probably safe to say we really don't want the property.
Correct.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion been made in second for, to move for approval? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried.
Thank you, Christine.
Yep.
Next up, we have Brad Chmlosky is here from Stony Brook Farms to explain to you his intent for a large exhibition. I'll let him come up and speak to that.
Christine, could you please double check to see if that mic is turned on?
It's green.
Okay.
I can speak a little louder if you can hear me, right? All right, well, good morning, guys. Thank you for allowing me to have this on the agenda, I guess. As you may have known, I've run this corn maze and pumpkin patch every year for about the last eight years since about twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Been really successful with it. It's been growing every year. Kind of been doing the same things each year as far as safety and traffic control and things like that. But I kind of came aware that there was going to be a, kind of an enforcement of this large exhibition ordinance that is on for the county, I guess. So just kind of want to see, I'm going to submit that permit probably today. And just kind of see if you guys have any concerns or anything that might deny my approval. But the corn maze is planted, the pumpkins are planted, so hopefully everything goes all right. But just wanted to come before the board and see if there's any concerns with you guys as well. But usually average attendance, at the most, we'd probably have four to five hundred people there at one time. We get about eighteen to twenty thousand people come through every year.
Any concerns, any questions?
I don't, I don't see any from my standpoint.
I think everybody's reviewed, you know, or reviewed the permit.
True. Well, if there's anything that comes up, just let me know.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, and then lastly, I have a request for a part-time technical analyst position. Currently, we have one person in this position. I believe in the past, it was held by three people. Prior to me, I don't know how it ended up coming down to just one person. We are experiencing large amounts of documents, plats, splits, combines. There's over four hundred document types that come through. And on average, we're getting about thirty of them per day. We have a five-day statutory window to complete those on electronic documents and ten days on paper. Obviously, we're getting a lot more electronic documents, which shortens that window to the five days. And the person currently in the position is just overwhelmed. And I don't want to lose her.
Questions for Christine? I have some questions. How long have we been doing this and what's, I mean, we've been doing it for a long time. And is this person, you know, because of the workload, unable to perform duties? Or are we?
No, I mean, she can still perform them. It's just, there's just too much work for one person is simply what it comes down to. Because some of the documents can take, the legal descriptions can take three to four hours to go through. Well, that's just one document. Then if you have twenty of those sitting there waiting for you each day, it's a very in-depth position.
Okay. Typically, these kind of things, we like to have come before when we do budget and they come before the budget instead of in the middle of the cycle is my thoughts on this. I mean, if we're getting by now, we can probably get by till the beginning of the year when we can.
How, how many hours a week are this individual putting in?
Forty.
Okay. So it's not overtime?
No.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, your proposal here shows that she's considering moving to a part-time position?
She would like to go to part-time because of the stress of the position. So I guess where I'm at is, what do we do if, if she just up and quits? We, we have nobody and this, this is a very important position. We can't go without it.
Mr. Chair, do you think you could find somebody for a part-time? Because if you look at it, both people go down to part-time. It's basically, other than a few extra taxes and stuff like that, it's going to be a wash. Or would, or would the part-time pays go up?
We would want the, a full-time and a part-time position.
That's where I have the problems, that we're adding a person, you know?
Yeah.
We're adding another person to the staff.
It would be adding a part-time position.
Right. I think the goal, the notion there is that the person that's in the full-time job would like to move part-time and then you'd fill, you'd fill.
So you'd still have one FTE then?
Right.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
You'd still have one FTE with a part-time.
Yes, yes, one more FTE, twenty hours a week.
What's the approximate cost on that?
It's in here, thirty six thousand.
Thirty six seven.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, you said, Monty, you said twenty hours a week?
I think that's what, Chris, we talked about, isn't it twenty?
Yeah. Your current employee would go to twenty and you'd bring somebody on new at twenty?
No, bring someone new in at full-time.
Full-time, so you'd have one and a half FTEs.
Right, well, yeah, right. I thought you were just thinking about the additional one, so.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't know.
We have, currently, our, we're, we've been short-staffed in the DMV and we, so we have budget in that, in that salary, the DMV salaries to cover it. And also, the revenue from the DMV has increased substantially over the last year, so. There is.
Mr. Chair, I agree with you. We, I also struggle, you know, I, I agree about the part-time position. It's a problem. We've got to fill it with a full-time position because the adds of us getting another person to do part-time for only twenty hours without benefits, I think we struggle with that. But that's just my opinion.
And then I apologize if I've created confusion again. Our person that we have now wants to move into the part-time job.
Right, yeah.
So we'd be recruiting for a full-time role.
We'd be recruiting for a full-time.
So we're just really adding a half-time position in, in essence, but.
And how much, are you, you're short-staffed over at the DMV right now?
Yeah.
How long have you been short-staffed there?
All year.
All year?
We've been down one all year and two for a couple months. And then we just filled one and we have another one coming in in August. So we'll be back to full, fully staffed there.
Okay.
But we've been pulling the person who has been helping this technical analyst to the DMV. When the DMV is short, it's just been a lot of moving parts, you know?
So the DMV employees are cross-trained to do this position also?
One is.
Okay. Would, would this, the person that wants to go part-time, would it be considerate to ask her, if she wants to go part-time, that we wait till after the next, you know?
Board presentation.
The board presentation.
Budget cycle.
Budget cycle and we, we could, if she wants to, you know, take a leave and then we could hire somebody full-time to replace her? And then we could look at that at, at the budget time?
Basically, what he's saying is budgets are next month. Yeah. Start going with them. That would be, this would, might be a good thing to be put on the budget presentation. And then it would, we would take place potentially at the, at the end of the year. But if we've approved it, there's times where we've actually said.
Said, go ahead.
Go ahead before the end of the year.
At the budget presentation.
Yeah, exactly.
Because we have to have the preliminary set by the end of September anyway.
Yeah.
Yes, at first, me and Agassi, I'll ask you to schedule those. Right, yeah. Budget work session, final, excuse me, adoption, proposed budget loving.
Because we've, we've done that before when we've had excess for people not, you know, fill positions like sheriff's department, stuff like that.
Christine, I have a couple of questions. How long has this, this full-time employee been in your, in your department?
Eight years.
That's a long time.
How versed is she at doing her position? And can somebody just jump into that position and do it?
Roxanne?
Yeah, sorry, I just went ready to jump up. Because this position actually, for a time being, was in the land services department. And then because it needed to be a deputized, I think it was deputized, so it could sign on behalf of the auditor treasures office. That's when it moved over to the auditor treasures office. So it's bounced back and forth over time. It, it's essentially, they're a title examiner. It, it's a very complex job. It's not easy to learn. And I know we, Scott in our office, the JIS coordinator, takes on a lot of questions and assists Lea Tha through that process. It, it's not going to be easy to fill. And frankly, there's not schooling for it or anything like that. It's sort of on the job unless you've been working for a title examiner and learning to read those descriptions. There is a lot that comes into the office and a lot of it is not thoroughly read through and processed before it even gets to Christine's office. And so that just adds extra work. And I think the, the digital process has made that much easier for title companies to submit things without thoroughly reviewing them. And it, and it may cause it to be rejected five times without them ever fixing an error that we pointed out to them. So I, it is, it's a stressful job. And I, I support Christine in this and I told her I could hear that, support her in this request.
You've got a five-day statutory requirement to turn it around, regardless, electronic or paper?
No.
Five, electronic, ten paper.
Ten paper, okay.
But most are electronic now.
See, my biggest concern with this is, is I know that this usually comes through budget, but my biggest concern with this is you can't lose that eight-year employee because you're saying, no, we're not going to do this until budget time. And then you have nobody sitting in that position to be able to do that process where at least that if she stays on part-time, she has the capability of training that full-time person into that position. So, I mean, to me, that's very important. I mean, to try and find somebody to fill that position. If she just ups and says, okay, this is way too stressful, I can't handle this, I'm gone.
And it's, in, in, in all honesty, it's, it's a half-time position because we've already got the full-time.
Correct.
But it's still thirty six thousand that we've got to come up with now.
Mr. Chair.
Where's your famous question? Where would this come out of?
Yeah, where's the, what's coming out of? I think it's, Christine noted, your, 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 your over-year on DMV revenue is ahead. I, do you have a rough, kind of rough number of where you're at, your over-year in terms of being ahead of budget?
I think we budgeted two hundred.
I don't recall exactly.
Yeah, and we should do about three sixty this.
Oh, my lord.
Christine, just logistically, so if this person right now is full-time, is interested in part-time, but if the board were to move ahead with that position, would they stay full-time through the transition?
Yes, yep, and the training and everything, which would be very much.
Once that's kind of complete, they want to back off to half?
Yeah.
Is half the right number?
Yeah.
They want to be half?
Yep.
Well, Commissioner, I know it brings up a good point. If the employee's gone, we got a lot bigger problem.
We have a huge problem, right? Way more than thirty six thousand.
Plus some legal issues.
Commissioner Heinem. I, I get that, but this process has probably been ongoing.
Right, it's not like it happened yesterday.
Why did it just come now?
And my, my thought is.
Why didn't we have it come sooner, like in the beginning?
Here's the deal, you ever boil noodles? All of a sudden you look away and then the next minute it's boiled over.
Right.
And that, and that's probably what happens. The, the individual got to their last string and goes, I gotta do something.
Yeah, but I, I think in the process that we do budget, we could be on board, you know, the end of September. And I think.
Couple, couple things I, I would like to bring, like how, how, how much you're, I will say on or over-budgeted right now. So on, on, on the running shorthanded through the DMV. If maybe we could, I'll just, I, I'm not one to kick it down the road or table things, but for the next meeting, it might not be a bad idea to have those things. Because if there's enough money there, at that point, we can make a decision before the budget side of things. Or we can, we can choose to look at it and then say, let's bring it to the budget. Either way, it's only a, you know, either a, a couple weeks or, or a month.
Month.
Right, but I'd like to see Christine talk to that employee to make sure that that employee is not so stressed or having medical issues. That they're gonna just say, because we said no, nothing at this meeting, that they're gonna say, I'm done.
Yeah, we don't want that.
That's my concern.
Well, and I, I think that you, you need to let her know that, that we're looking at putting it to the next meeting and get her thoughts, her feelings and maybe a couple commissioners can stop by and talk to her and find out, you know, if she's willing to hang tight or till we can come to, to a consensus on what we need to do moving forward.
So can we have a consensus that she's come back at this August fifth meeting or do you wanna wait till budget or what's?
Well, I, I think with, with numbers, I'd like to see how much we're under budget on your, on your departments.
Okay.
And.
projected revenue.
The other thing is, is if we would do something like this, I'd like to continue that cross-training to where if, if all of a sudden DMV needs somebody and, and you can spare, you know, the half-time person, go over there and help out, so.
I think the.
Commissioner Heinem, you're sighing over there. What, what you got?
It's too hot in here.
Oh.
I agree.
I've just came over my sinus infection, it's like.
I, I, I truly don't wanna lose this individual.
No, you don't wanna lose the individual.
Because I, I'm, I don't know how we'd fill it and still meet timelines. What, what is the penalties, Michelle, if we don't meet these?
I would have to look at that. I haven't ever looked at the penalty section. I've just reviewed a lot of documents where so I can attest to that, that they are dealing with complex issues.
Okay.
Can't ask for forgiveness.
Yeah.
Okay. So maybe bring it back next meeting and have the information on, for example, DMV revenue, where we stand year-to-date, how, how over-budget we might be in terms of the revenue collections and that might be helpful.
And if we've had opening positions, there's, there's dollars there available, how much?
At least for this year.
At least for the rest of the year.
Then we have to look at the budget.
That gives us an opportunity.
Exactly. I, I can tell you from my standpoint, I'm, I'm fine looking at it and, and figuring something out because if we don't, it'll figure itself out for us.
And then we're gonna be in bigger trouble?
Yep.
So please make sure you let that employee know that we are taking consideration into that and that we, August fifth, we're just asking for some more numbers and to make sure that we can cover that within the budget.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Thanks, Christine. This time we'll recess the county board for the board of, the board meeting of the Housing and Redevelopment Meeting.
All right, Ms. Chair, let's call it a order, our Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board Meeting. Looks like everyone is here. For the record, please, Beth, if you could note that. We have some housekeeping items to take care of. First, Mr. Chair, we need to select the HRA president for two thousand twenty-five. So are there nominations for the president of the HRA for two thousand twenty-five?
Um, Mr. Chair, I will move for Commissioner Pop and Commissioner Heinem as chair and vice chair.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been second. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so Commissioner Pop, if you could take over as our HR president, we need to select a secretary. And as noted in my agenda item, the secretary can be any other HR board member and that person signs HRA documents along with the president. So we need an HRA secretary.
Okay. Open for nominations for an HRA secretary.
I will, you know what, I'll nominate Commissioner Benoit.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for Commissioner Benoit. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Commissioner Benoit?
Call of course.
You win by a white ballot. Congratulations. Select an executive director.
So, Ms. Chair, Northland informs me that is, there will be subsequent bond documents that require signature of the executive director. And they recommend appointing your administrator as the executive director. And again, it's for purpose of signing subsequent bond documents.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Yep, second.
We didn't give him a chance to say he doesn't want it.
He's got no choice.
I was gonna put Scott in there.
Motion's been made for the county administrator to be executive director.
Aye.
All in, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Monte.
Thank you, sure.
All right. Consent agenda.
Who's here?
Yeah, which one on this board?
From July sixth of two thousand and four.
That's gonna be an interesting approval.
I might abstain.
We all have to abstain?
Yeah.
You know, I'll let you decide that, Ms. Chair and members of the county board. It, if you don't wanna approve them, that's okay. Meeting minutes don't have to be approved. It's nice if they are because then they, they carry that for official stamp of approval. But if you don't feel comfortable, that's fine. We can certainly pass.
I'll move to approve them. Doesn't mean I'm gonna vote for it.
I'll second it.
Well, if you're gonna, we could have a little discussion, Mr. Chair, then maybe we can make notation in that approval that, you know, to recognize none of us were here.
I was here for that meeting, yeah. There you go.
You wanna sit up here?
There isn't anybody else that was here.
No.
I'm sorry, was there a motion second on that?
Yes.
There was.
There is, we were having a little discussion.
A little discussion on who was here. Maybe we should even discuss who's still with us.
There's twenty years?
Yeah, twenty years, long time.
You know, I, from my standpoint, I look at it and go, I, I, I'd hate to put in the record something that wasn't true and, and, and valid. And now we just, like, you know, blank stamped it. So.
Well, I certainly, I can certainly vouch for, I have his act that meeting and I can vouch for the accuracy of the meeting minutes, for, for what it's worth.
Okay.
Yeah. That was, you know, that was the last time HR was, was used as a vehicle to refinance debt on the court facility. So that's what that was all about.
Just. Mr. Chair, would it be appropriate, I mean, it says approve or amend. Can we make a statement in there that?
We weren't here.
None of us were here, were present and based on the administrator's recollection of the minutes, we're gonna move for approval.
Was that a motion?
Make that a motion, please.
Well, let's let the other die.
I recon, I, I can send mine.
I'll, I'll resend mine, too.
Okay, so then I'll move for amending the Benton County HRA meeting minutes of July sixth, two thousand and four. Recognize that none of the current board was in membership then and that we would consider the county administrator's recollection of the minutes to be accurate.
Accurate.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded, whatever he said.
We got it.
We got it and, any other discussion? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Thank you. I had a feeling that might be a little bit, bit of a challenge. All right, Ms. Chair, moving on. So this item comes to you based upon the recommendation of our bond counsel, Mary Ippe. And she tells us that this is the process that, that is before us. So at some point, I believe it's August fifth, we'll ask the county board to hold a public hearing on the redevelopment plan. A draft of the redevelopment plan is in your packet. That was prepared by Mary's law firm. So what we're asking today is you sitting now as the HRA to request that the county board hold a public hearing on the redevelopment plan. So again, we're not asking you to approve the redevelopment plan today. We're simply asking you to ask the county board to hold a public hearing August fifth on the redevelopment plan. So that's, that's the, that's the resolution in your packet today.
Okay, pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to ask the county board to hold a public hearing on the redevelopment plan.
And just for the record, that's August fifth?
August fifth.
Nine AM, the county board.
Nine AM.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to consider a motion for Benton County Housing and Redevelopment Authority requesting the county board conduct a public hearing on the redevelopment plan in connection with the financing of the government center. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right.
We're adjourned at ten thirty-nine.
Okay. So now we put our, you put your county board hat back on and hey, Mr. Chair, then the next action before you is, is to schedule that public hearing as county board. You're now saying as county board to schedule that public hearing for August fifth, nine AM here in the boardroom on the redevelopment plan.
Motion to adopt resolution to set a public hearing on August fifth, two thousand twenty-five at nine AM in county board room on those redevelopment plan in connection with financing a new city government center.
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
One more for you, or Monte or Chris?
Chris.
Chris Byrd, County Road fifty-four. I, I called and had this put on the agenda because I had some conversations about it. The person that called is not here. I think they're questioning the legal right-of-way on this road.
I've also had numerous conversations as well, yes.
I've had conversations with township officials.
So what can you tell us, Chris?
Well, in the last couple of days, just limited amount of research we've been able to do. Some of the early documentation I've come across that this road has existed since at least nineteen forty-one. Prior to nineteen sixty, it was also known as State Aid Route twelve. So before they had adopted the county state aid highway nomenclature and system, it was known as State Aid Road twelve. And then after that point became County Road fifty-four. Which is common a lot, on a lot of roads, rural roads especially. There may not be recorded easement documents. A lot of roads exist by width of use. The fact that a road authority has been maintaining that road to the width of use for a number of years. That's, I guess, the preliminary, what I've found so far on this, this section of roadway. So. I did, one other thing, I did confirm that the assessor's office has been removing one acre of land from their, their tax roll or assigned one acre of land as zero tax value, which would be, for a forty-acre parcel, thirty-three feet of road right-of-way comes out to be one acre of land. And so that area of road right-of-way, at least thirty-three feet of it, has not been taxed.
Do you know when that occurred, Chris?
Uh, my conversation with the assessor yesterday was as far back as they had records on it, so.
Mr. Chair, Chris, do we know how many owners, I mean, I understand the current owner is the one who's brought up the concern, but
There's others.
Is there others, others along County fifty-four that have the same concern?
Uh, did they have the same concern? I have not heard concerns from other.
Additional landowners.
I do know the concerns have come to us that we have never been able to maintain it as well as some residents would like. We either cut down too many trees or we didn't cut enough. We didn't plow it soon enough. We're plowing it too much. We're, uh, we mowed too far back. You didn't mow enough. So it's been a, and as you know, we've tried to work on a turnback agreement with the township and we have not come to amicable terms with the township for them to take that over as their own maintenance.
Six or eight residences on that road, on that section?
Yeah, um, yeah, there's at least seven parcels, but maybe about six residences.
Yeah.
Yeah, you should bring it up on Beacon.
What about the utilities? I know that's not, that's not your forte or you don't have, we don't control utilities, but it, I think in our conversation, Chris, that utility may be outside the thirty-three?
Uh.
Feet?
Well, that's, we don't know for sure. So we didn't have them located or anything like that. I did find some documentation that goes back twenty years. That's maybe when the utility company, I think we're talking about this parcel right here. So, I mean, there's a residence, that looks like a residence, there's a residence, there's a residence back here, but multiple parcels along here, and this is the forty-acre parcel in question here, so.
So extending to that ninety-one-hundred parcel, that doesn't, that doesn't go on their property, the Petrowskis?
Uh. I think.
I kinda was under the understanding the whole, the whole road goes on their.
Ninety-one and.
Correct.
Eighty-three hundred, both?
Mm-hmm.
Both of these parcels are owned by?
I believe so, yes.
Yes.
I don't think we were aware of that, so.
Chris, does the road go all the way back to the back end of the, whatever, that right there?
It goes to, yeah, here currently, so.
Okay. Michelle?
I will add, I did find a document from nineteen ninety-three. I just did a brief look at the records. More would have to be done. But in nineteen ninety-three, they did revoke portions and rename portions and County Road fifty-four was a portion of that where they re-identified a line that included both of those parcels, but it did revoke a portion of County Road fifty-four.
When you say they, what do you mean?
And how long ago was that?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three.
This GIS would show, and of course, that's not necessarily survey lines, right? This is an indication of lines.
Yeah, nothing would be a hundred percent accurate without a, probably a legal survey.
This would show that the county road is on the property.
Right. I think.
Yeah, we always caution aerial photographs. I mean, unless they're directly overhead, may not be a hundred percent accurate representation, so.
Commissioner Kapinski, I think you're under the understanding that I am, that the property owner had this surveyed and this, that the road.
Is definitely, he showed me the stakes.
That it's definitely on his property.
Yeah, because actually the stakes are actually across the road.
So in other words, this is a private road?
No, it's a county road. But you know.
If he has a survey that shows that, then what?
We would have to do some research.
I mean, we, we have documentation, we've been maintaining this road for decades.
Well, that's, that was another question I had from Michelle. So when you maintain a road for X number of years, whether, you know, a governing body, whether it's township or whatever, you actually have rights to that then?
Called dedication by use.
Yeah.
And it doesn't just include a paved portion, it does include potentially.
Yes, because we had one of them in Langola where it was, it wasn't even a road, it was a, what do they call it, a cartway.
Cartway.
And the cartway was being maintained and they wanted it asphalted and everything else. And we did not have to buy property from the adjacent landlord to the north because we were maintaining that road for X number of years. We didn't do nothing but put a little gravel on it and snowplow it and that was enough to say that it was your right-of-way.
Believe me, there's nothing more I'd want than to reduce the number of assets that we have to maintain, except that I know the moment we do that, we'll have other people knocking down the door saying, hey,
Yep.
I want, we want you to maintain this. We want you to plow out to our, our driveway now.
And I think in this case, we just want clarity for the owner.
Yes.
You know, I mean, if, if they have documentation or whatever, we have to get it to the bottom of who.
Who's documentation's correct.
Right, who, yeah, who's documentation.
Well, I would remind you too, however, that they might own the underlying property. That doesn't impact the easement for the right-of-way. So they're certainly may not be definitive of where the county road is.
And even if that's true, back to your dedication of use, it's gonna be, the county's used it.
Yeah, yeah, because that's, there's hundreds of miles of roadway that the underlying property owner still owns to that section line, but with the roads over top of it by, by easement.
Sure.
Only in a handful location, mostly in municipal areas where we have bought the fee title to the land and, you know, the county holds the title. Most miles of roadway are just there by easement.
Yeah, and if you go out in the country and you see, you know, the. Yeah, and if you go on in the country and you see, you know, the, the quarter section markers are usually in the middle of the road.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's where your property starts, you don't pay taxes on it, but that's where your property starts. And if you're surveying, that's where you start.
Mm-hmm, yeah. That, that's, that's where it was a little different when, when he showed me the one stake, I remember in the corner. So you had the, it was all the way on the other side of the road. So it was, it was going, it was a thirty-three feet plus is where he was showing me.
But then what do you do with the dedication of use though?
Exactly. I, I get it, I, I, I don't know what to, I mean, we, we can't recreate the law here either.
Is he, is the landowner wanting just clarification or other intentions or? Well, I don't know, from when we were speaking to him, it's something to do with East Central came in and buried line and put transformers and, and all.
Yeah, they put it right in there, they can't turn a truck in, in the private property and, and stuff like that.
He said, he'll probably use the center line of the road.
Yeah, probably.
But East Central had to have been issued a permit from somebody, township or county or?
Well, county road on this, I would think. Utilities would have to pull a permit, wouldn't they, Chris?
Uh, theoretically, um.
Wouldn't Baton Communications went in there because they're in there also? I think they halted their process right now.
Um.
I think they halted.
Who figures out if they're outside that thirty-three feet?
Yeah. Well, I mean, we, we'd have to have the utilities located and marked on the surface, um, and then have to compare that to some kind of understanding of where the roadway is.
I, I can, I can see the applicant's issue with this, especially with the utilities, because they, they, they don't have any recorded easement. Nobody knows these laws better than attorneys and, and, you know, road authorities, right?
Right, Michelle.
I personally don't know, I would imagine it doesn't, you, you see all these fence lines that are maintained by neighbors that could be off ten feet. I would imagine that, that, uh, you've been maintaining it, doesn't, doesn't go to individuals, just government entities, right?
Well, there is prescriptive easements, so there's, you know, quiet title actions that can be held privately.
Okay.
Yeah, we have extra.
But from, from, from what the, what, what this individual is saying is, um, the electric company put a transformer or a pad right in the way of them being able to turn around trucks. And there's no way, and I think you had mentioned, Chris, too, it's hard to turn any truck around back there.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's a constant issue with us, like, we drive down the road one way and, yeah. That would be in that, that cul-de-sac that's up there.
No, this would, that would be before that, but, but it, it put it right, right where they turn into their.
They got an access coming up.
Correct.
Fifty-four, that's, I think it's the only one on fifty-four to get onto that property.
And I, I, from what I hear is Excel has not been, not Excel, but East Central has not been real, uh, um, eager to do anything with it without them paying the money. So there's a lot of underlying deals with this, with this, and, um, we just wanted to bring it up and, and figure out what we can come to, what, what we can go back to them with.
I'm just trying to mind my correspondence, I had correspondence from East Central just last week. We, we were under the impression that they were trying to do something recently, and then they confirmed that, uh, no, they were not doing anything recently. And they were not aware of why this was becoming an issue now, so. So from what we understand, the, the lines have been underground and maybe this pad box has been there for an undetermined amount of years, so I can understand if there was something happening recently, then there'd be cause, because then we would want to know, we didn't have any permits recently with East Central either. We'd want some permit from them to work in our right of way, so, um.
When is the last permit that they pulled out there? Was that quite a few years ago?
Yeah, I mean, predates, I, I'm thinking this is early one thousands.
I thought, I thought it was just done recently.
Yeah, I thought it was within this construction year.
Oh. I, I, I was under the understanding either last year or the year before, but it were very recent is what.
Well, when we were out there touring fifty-four for the potential, uh.
Turnback.
Turnback to Granite Ledge.
Yeah.
Baton Communications was already in there, so they've been in there a while.
Yeah.
There's no new activity there, because Granite Ledge was one of the few townships up there that were built out.
Yeah.
When we were doing the broadband work. Yeah, that's true.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I'm gonna throw it out there, I mean, is there a way that maybe Chris, yourself and I and whoever else could maybe just meet out there and kind of take a look?
And, yeah, we could, we could certainly schedule a meeting.
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, obviously, we know that the, they, you guys have been using the, or we've all been using the road, so we got legal rights to that right now, correct?
Yeah, does, uh, the landowner have, uh, a completed certificate of survey from a surveyor? Would they be willing to share that with us where, you know, a licensed surveyor found the property?
I would think so, but we can relay that message.
Yeah.
The survey's public documents?
Not necessarily on a private, you know, parcel.
Okay.
I mean, our section corner information is all out there.
Only if you register that, right?
What's that?
Only if you record it.
Yeah.
That survey.
Well, is it something that rather than, I mean, we're doing our road tours shortly, is this something that we can go look at during our?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, next Monday, we're already.
Then you're not planning another meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll make it as a stop on the road tour, uh, on Monday.
That's where you're gonna get that extra Jelly Bismarck.
Nice thinking, Commissioner Bonnite. You're providing the donuts?
Yeah, East Central claims that they have not done anything out there in decades, mail that we received from them on Thursday. Nothing new has happened on that road in decades from.
Is this a new owner?
No. I think, uh.
I think.
Warren Woods have, yeah.
I think they've transferred it from, uh, from like a entity to an, um.
Another entity, a trust, yes, you're right.
And I think that's where, it's the same people.
It's the same people, but I think that's when the survey became probably, so I don't know, you know. Okay.
Well, this is a, I can, I can vouch, this is not the only place in the county this has happened, because most of you know where I live and my property goes across that road. By time for me to Jared away.
To your.
And the road is right in the middle of my property.
I wonder if we have dedication use on that road, are you a township road?
Well, it was a county road and then it swapped and turned back, and now it is township road.
Was you one of the people that opposed that turnback that time?
It was swapped.
It was swapped, yeah.
Yeah, it was swapped.
Yeah, thirty-fifth.
Oh, thirty-fifth.
Now I remember that.
I was pretty new, that's why it sticks in my brain, that was twenty-twelve.
Oh, wasn't that?
No, that was later than that, because I was on the board when we did that swap.
With Minn Township?
Yeah.
Does that ring, ring a bell?
Yeah.
I believe my husband was on the township board.
Okay.
Before my time.
Okay.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll make a stop on our road tour next Monday to look at this, so.
And not to get off subject, but can you also add to your road tour eleven and twenty-two?
Okay.
Eleven and twenty-two.
Yeah.
Counties.
Had quite a few.
Counties eleven and twenty-two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but the issue is, we fought with contractor, there's, there's settlement over a pipe that was replaced. And so there's a dip, a significant dip in the roadway with that project, so.
Okay.
They fixed it once and it's still settling, so.
Which tells me they couldn't have packed it very well.
It's pretty low some places through there.
Yeah, so.
Let's, let's hit about fifty-five and see how it's.
Yeah.
And what kind of lift we get.
Being told that it will lift somebody into the ditch.
Well, hopefully there's no stumps.
Coming up too.
Yeah.
Just so, as long as we're on the road tour, I will not be on the road tour, I won't be back yet in time.
Okay.
I will make it to the first stop, I.
Okay. All right, thanks, Chris. Commissioner meeting updates.
I'm going, uh, uh, I had a city council meeting on seven-seven with the city of St. Cloud, um, career one days on seven-eight. I had a Lincoln Avenue meeting with the contractors for updates on Lincoln Avenue on seven-nine and a, I went to the planning commission meeting on seven-ten.
July eighth, I had, uh, union negotiations and we had career day, career day, career.
Career one day.
Career one day, thank you, at, uh, career solutions at the technical college, uh, union again on the ninth and radio show on WJON. Tenth was criminal justice. Jared, did you?
Wasn't there seven females, thirty-six?
Yeah.
Um, male in the jail?
Yeah, I think I left my notes at home, sorry.
There really wasn't a lot.
There wasn't much for an updated.
No.
Criminal justice. And then, uh, yesterday I was, yeah, I was in and out on the phone with union negotiations, I was not feeling the best.
How's that going?
Just like they, just like they have in the past. That's it, sorry.
Um, July ninth, I spent about, uh, three hours in the jail, uh, spent some time with. Touring, touring.
Clarification?
With Charlene and a number of the staff over there I was able to meet, spent some time in general for probably forty-five minutes, which is about forty-three minutes too long for me. It's kind of some action in there, they have to notice what those detention officers have to deal with sometimes. Um, spent some time in Central over there too, um, also, uh, walked through the women's unit with the detention officer, um, went through the whole facility, walked over through the tunnel, over to the court facilities, saw how that process worked, so. I had been through the jail before, but had never spent any specific time there. Also, then later that evening, I was able to spend about another three hours with Katie Dusine and, um, Julie was there when I first got there and dispatch, that was pretty interesting, it was pretty quiet, I'd walked in just as they were finishing up that accident, I think. Up on ten.
On twelve.
Just, or, yeah, I don't know if that's where it was.
What day was you in there?
The ninth.
No, that wasn't.
Okay, and so I didn't get in on the, that was just ending, um, but very interesting, a lot of questions, a lot of information, they've got a lot going on there. One thing that really stood out to me, I don't know, for those of you that maybe sat dispatch, I thought it was interesting that they really don't, on the screen in front of them, they really don't have the location of our deputies. The deputies are calling in and saying, you know, I'm at such and such an address. The reason I noticed it is because when I did a ride along with the deputies, they have on their laptops where their car is going, right? And so when they're communicating all the time, they're checking in with dispatch and, you know, like, I think Katie that night set a three-minute timer that if she didn't hear back from the deputy, she's gonna check in with them again, because maybe they didn't clear, seeing where they were at, something to that effect. But I just thought it was really interesting, up on the main screens, you don't really see where your deputy is.
Yeah, yeah, they do.
Yeah.
I asked her multiple times, she said, I don't, we don't see them, I go by their address, and if I know the address, I know where they're at, but I don't physically see.
They're all GPS.
Well, that, that is weird, because when I was there, we could actually see where the car was moving.
Well, not on the screen she had up.
The top right, or top left screen when we.
She had the county split about, you know, who was on the east side, who was on the west side, which deputies were patrolling, et cetera. But I asked specifically because I saw that in the deputy squad, where they're moving.
Yeah.
But I did not see it in dispatch.
Oh, when I was at dispatch though, four or five years ago, we could see it because we could see it on.
Maybe it was the particular.
It's entirely possible, maybe they're in the midst of a system change, I, I've seen it before too, I know what you're talking about.
I bring it up because it was interesting that I could see it.
Couldn't see it.
Sure, right.
And I had seen it in the, uh, deputy squads.
Yeah.
But anyways, able to spend some great time with them, learned a lot, had very good discussions, so. Um, and of course, last week's planning commission meeting, so that's what I had.
Okay, uh, our APO meeting was canceled, we had a criminal justice, I think, what'd they say, that they had one person that was able to do STS if.
If one.
Yeah, but they had some that would qualify for in-house, right?
Ten of them that wanted to qualify.
Yeah, and one that, yeah.
Really? Yeah.
So.
They had more.
And then airport authority, me, we had our airport meeting, that was a very interesting meeting again, um, that's a, uh, continue and watch and learn and, um, one of the things that, that I brought up there is, you know, we met May fifteenth and I brought up the fact that, you know, hey, what about naming rights to bring in more revenue, everything like that? And they just failed to.
Disclose anything.
Disclose that they were rebranding the airport that night.
Yeah. They didn't think it, what?
St. Cloud Sky Central.
Wasn't important enough to. It's.
So it, 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 uh, got voted on unanimously to, um, basically rebrand it that night. They haven't come out publicly with it right now.
No.
But it, I mean, anybody who looks at the minutes and everything like that can see that. So, I don't know, yeah, that was frustrating, um, I think they still plan on doing the million dollars.
That's what I would think, um, I like Commissioner Kapinski was really, we had some pushback from them about having elected officials on there. And that wasn't unanimous, we had one, one member that, he didn't really say no, and he didn't really say yeah.
Yeah, I think he's still thinking.
Yeah, yep. About whether or not there should be an elected official.
Yeah, well, anytime that we're gonna be putting money to the taxpayers, I think there should be some elected, and, 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 eh, this is just a, uh, you know, a technicality, but they have, their, their board is listed as commissioners and there's a Commissioner Johnson on there that people misconstrued with.
Commissioner Johnson.
Only it's Kevin Johnson versus.
Our appointment.
Yeah, and it just had to be from Baton County, so it, it.
If you're outside, and I think you brought that up.
Yeah, I brought that up.
If you're from the outside looking in.
Oh, great.
They're thinking you're making.
Yeah, you're making these decisions, so good luck.
Yeah, great. Great.
But, you know, I, it comes down, we're gonna do, now, now we're at the point where we're gonna do a meeting with St. Cloud and Sherburne.
Sherburne maybe at that one then?
Yeah.
So far, they haven't been?
No. And I, I did talk to Sherburne County and they were unaware as well of the rebranding.
Yeah.
That they actually went and did it.
So is it safe to say none of the appointments by any of the counties reported anything back to their county?
That would be one hundred percent accurate.
It was in the minutes.
That was in.
Remember that.
And, and I did bring up, we're, we're, we, we, we bring that up to everybody too when they come in and, and oppose things that we've done, it, you know, watch our minutes, everything like that, so I did put that on me, I said, hey, I'll take it full, full well, but at the end of the day, we were here on the fifteenth and that never once got brought up that you were doing that.
To your point though, Commissioner Kapinski, these have been appointed by county boards.
Mm-hmm.
This isn't the general public.
Yeah.
This is true. So, I mean, all of us sit on appointments that we come back and report to the county board, that's what we're doing right now. And we get minutes. And we get minutes.
And it was brought up, were, were, was there any, um, uh, consideration taken in for the counties? And it was the three lines underneath the logo or something like that, that represent the counties. That was in the minutes too.
It's gonna be really represented when they receive tax levy money from the counties.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's a, uh, you know, that's a, just for, for, for my standpoint, I did have Monte record it and stuff like that, so I wanted to make sure that I wasn't overstepping or anything like that. They did, they did resend the communication deal. They got us that, you see that email? So that was good, that was done in November of last year. And it was, that was the one that, that there was tons of meeting minutes on and I didn't go all the way down, so. I, I felt bad on that, but they did, uh, Bill sent that over, that was done in, in November, um.
So the, the people we appoint to the board now can report back to the board?
Yep, they can, yep, there is no.
There is, I, I was surprised that the pushback on having elected officials sit on the, on the board.
It was, I mean, it was really, their pushback, um, was.
Conflict of interest and everything else.
Yeah, we're all, we're gonna be voting for our, our position, uh, at the next, uh, at the next election. And we're like, uh, how about you utilize us as a bonus, like, we go out to DC, we go to the state, we, we can be advocating for this airport.
Yeah.
You know, so.
We, we stress that, I mean, even, um, Commissioner Knott stressed that, you know, he believes there's importance to the counties.
Mm-hmm.
Airport, but. I don't think that's ever been the argument.
No, but.
Or less the communication of levy authority. They feel that it's maybe not as important as what we, the county think it is.
I know, one of the, one of the things that, uh, um, Brian, is it Brian, yeah.
Brian Myers.
Yeah, Brian Myers brought up, he's like, oh, this was ten minutes before I, I, I got him caught in a little trap, and it wasn't a trap, it was just wording. But it was like, we never, ever envisioned being a taxing authority within the ten years.
Right.
And then I, I brought up like ten minutes later, I said, well, what happens, you know, this is one million now, what happens when it's four or five million dollars in three years? And then I, I brought up like ten minutes later, I said, well, what happens, you know, this is one million now, what happens when it's four or five million dollars in three years? And everything like, and they both looked, it'll never happen, it'll never happen, I'm like, well, we just said. And, and did I, 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 I just, I said, we just said ten minutes ago that you, you never thought it would come close to before ten years. So there, there's a lot of things that got, we all gotta get to the table and, and hammer this out.
And we're only in year six of the tenure?
And I'm gonna tell you, rebranding an airport right now, in the midst of all of this stuff, to me, I, I truly felt, and I brought this up. I felt like that was a, let's get this through the meeting, let's get it approved by the board and move on. Cuz I'll, I'll tell you this, if I would've known about the rebranding that, that day. I would've been at the airport meeting that night and say, I think you guys should table this, we need to get everybody together.
Rebranding's gonna cost money.
Well, they, they had a marketing company that was on for what, seven months, eight months?
Already.
Whitebox, well, yeah, that, they brought their recommendation that night, the fifteenth, so we met hours before and never once was this brought up. Even though direct questions about branding were, were asked.
Yeah.
So, that's all I got.
That's plenty, thank you.
Um, I just had labor negotiations at the airport and we had a MICA, uh, executive committee. Just trying to hammer out, uh, some of the finances that are gonna go through for next year. So that was all that I had. Commissioner concerns, anybody got anything?
I don't have any commissioner concerns, there's a couple things that I did want to bring up, so there. Uh, most of you probably got an email from Baton Soil and Water asking for all of us to. Go on a tour or whatever with them, do we put that on our cow?
Yeah, we do, we do.
Yep, yep, yep. I'll bring it up.
Oh, okay.
You bet.
And then the other one was, um, Roxanne sent an email out about, um. Navigating key, key land use issues for August seventh. I, I would like to go to that, I don't know if other commissioners are planning on going to that, but that might have to be listed as a cow too.
Okay, anything else?
Set committee of the halls?
All right, well, Mr. Chair, it's, it's time to schedule the Fall Policy Conference for AMC, that is September tenth, eleventh and twelfth. At Arrowood in Alexandria. We did go ahead and schedule your lodging arrangements, did we also register? We have registered you all and made your lodging arrangements for this, I, we did that because we know this hotel fills up really quickly.
Correct.
So that's why we got right on it, um, again, that's, uh, September tenth, eleventh and twelfth.
Mr. Chair, Beth, would you please e- email out the cancellation date, cancellation by date, please?
Alrighty, as Commissioner Benoit noted, Soil and Water wishes to ask, invite you to a, um, a tour of practices. Uh, but very different this year, so this year they wanna scale it back tremendously and shorten it. And the tour would be just the county board. That's what Jerry told me, so they're asking for some possible dates. Uh, that you all could go on a tour of practices, again, just the county board in this instance. I would suggest scheduling it a little cooler.
About the twenty-ninth of September. I can make that work.
The twenty-ninth of September, okay?
I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know what everybody else.
Excuse me?
I'm just throwing that out there, I don't know what everybody else.
I gotta get to my September calendar.
September twenty-ninth.
Monday.
Works for me.
Monte, would you ask Jerry or we can ask him too, I think. Some of the importance when they do this is that they have. Like, people like Tim there, so that they can get some of the projects. In the paper and know, knowing what, you know, the money that's being spent and the amount of money that's coming into the county from grants and that.
It highlights their annual.
It highlights their annual expenditures, I mean, you know, you talk, couple million bucks sometimes comes into the county from.
So, they hear September twenty-ninth?
That'll.
Yes, at nine AM, okay. Departing from Soil and Water at nine AM, roughly, okay. Um, and Commissioner Benoit, you mentioned the August sixth.
Seventh.
Excuse me?
Seventh.
Seventh. Key land use issues, um. I don't recall, it, did you register yourself for that one?
Me?
Yeah.
No, um, Roxanne said to let her know and she would get us registered.
Thank you, so, uh, besides Commissioner Benoit, anyone else interested in this?
I should, I will register also, but to her point, you may have to list it as a cow cuz I don't know who else is gonna.
Let's do that, well, let's, what was the start time?
Eight, yeah, nine o'clock, nine to four.
And I'm sorry, the loca- the location?
The Park Event Center.
Oh, in Wake Park, okay, thanks.
Registrations at eight, eight-thirty, registrations at eight-thirty.
Okay, so eight-thirty, Wake Park, the new conference center over there, key land use issues. And, and we know at least Commissioner Johnson, Benoit are interested, okay.
Could you please let?
And Mr. Chair, that's all we have.
Move for approval of the cows, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Well, it's been made and seconded to set the cows.
Any other?
Just a reminder, so again, your road tour begins at nine, excuse me, eight-thirty on Monday, eight-thirty on Monday.
Twenty-ninth of September.
Nope.
Your, your.
Monday.
Right, our highway, our own highway road tour is scheduled for eight-thirty departing.
Eight-thirty in, I don't know if we published this, but, uh, if we could meet at the highway department, that was, that'd be preferred, there's plenty of parking and stuff out there.
We can.
On the new pavement.
We can change the, the location, right, to highway, right, yeah.
Yeah, you can see the new pavement, hopefully we have all of it done by then.
You're not gonna use sir lines a lot, are you, to put boundary lines on?
No, we, we've got it, we, we learned recently there's a new player in town.
Yeah, from Wisconsin?
No, there's actually, uh, one from Minnesota that just bought a truck and they're trying to get into the market, so.
There you go.
And you said that's at eight-thirty or eight? I got it at eight o'clock. Chris must be buying donuts at eight, that's what it was.
Well, I, I looked on our committee, our, our official committee hall listing, it shows eight-thirty.
Okay. So, um.
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty, well, let's go ahead and make that address change now as part of your motion, if we can, then we don't have to like.
So moved.
Highway Department, right.
I'll amend.
Okay, well, it's been made to amend the motion to change the highway. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
We're good.